Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, November 9th. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Viera.
Here.
Vice Mayor De Rosset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Klein is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the invocation by Chris Gregs- Greg- Gritson?
Gritson.
All right. Senior Pastor for the Valley Christian Center.
Good evening. Father in heaven, I thank you for your, just your gifts. Father, we pray for our city leaders right now that you would just bless them, be with them, Lord God. I pray for a peace, and I pray for direction, Lord God. I pray that you would just be overseeing these proceedings, Lord God. And I pray that you would just minister to each one here. We pray for a wonderful time. We love you and praise you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have one presentation. It's a proclamation declaring November 11th, 2015, as Veterans' Day in the City of Series. I think, Mr. Smith, you're going to receive this. So proclamation reads, "Declaring November 11th, 2015, Veterans' Day in the City of Series. Whereas more than 2 million Californians are veterans of the U.S. Armed Forces, and whereas these men and women have made significant sacrifices to defend freedom, the Commonwealth, and the nation, and whereas the citizens of Series owe a debt of gratitude and more to the men and women who have worn the uniform and served and defended our great nation. And whereas even after our veterans take off the uniform, they never stop serving. Many apply the skills and experiences they developed on the battlefield to a life of service here at home, and whereas in 1938, Congress declared November 11th a legal holiday known as Armist Day, and in 1954, Congress replaced the word Armist with the word Veterans. And whereas November 11th is the day to honor and reflect on the service and sacrifice made by all veterans and their families, now therefore be it resolved that I, Chris Viera, Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby recognize November 11th, 2015, as Veterans' Day in the City of Series, and I encourage all Americans to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public ceremonies and private prayers. Proclaim this ninth day of November, 2015."
I'd like to thank the council for this proclamation on behalf of all the veterans
At this time, citizens, we will open it up for citizens' communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda
Leonard Shepherd, 2841 Fowler Road. I'm so happy to see the wet out there, but it hasn't stopped everything and stopped the fire season in its tracks or anything like that because if we get some more dry weather. And I've noticed all around Series, there are a lot of vacant lots and so forth, just full of weeds waiting for something to happen. But hopefully, we'll get enough rain to stop all that nonsense. I would like to say again how proud I am of Series Fire Department and their month-long efforts for breast cancer. They did an amazing job, pretty good meal out there on that Thursday night, and thanks to Mr. Benzinger, my wife and I showed up in the paper when we picked up our meal. My, our luck that he just happened to stumble across us, so, but anyway, thanks, Jeff. Firefighters and police officers do more than just their jobs. You'll find police and fire all over the country doing things like Toys for Tots and with the fire departments, fill the boot for MDA or burn foundations, all sorts of things, and they don't get recognized for it. Maybe when they do the fill the boot, they get recognized by some angry citizens who are slowed down by three seconds when they ask them to stop and drop a dollar or two into the boot, so. But I just want to tell you, Series firefighters are the best in this county and for a long ways around it. And I, for one, am glad that just down the road is Station 4, so if we need them, they're there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or one discussion item? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like one of the consent calendar items pulled for further discussion? Okay, I would like to pull item number six. Is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than item number Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for direction on the remaining items.
Move for approval of 1 through 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Passes 401. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I just had a few questions and comments that I had a chance to read through the agreement with CYB, and before I make my comments, I just want to go on the record and say that, you know, the city and CYB have had a great relationship over the years, so I look forward to working with them. But in going through the agreement, I noticed that there was a few things related to who's going to maintain the field, and I know we have adequate provisions in here to make sure that the fields are maintained at a standard that the city would do. But there was a, on item number 15, it talks, well, before I do that, it's kind of, kind of goes hand in hand. It's actually number 16, but before I do that, why don't I back up? On item number 14 of the agreement, which is on page 3 of 5, it says CYB shall make every attempt to shop local. I would like to, as part of the reporting, find a percent, get provided a percentage of what purchases they had that was local, and by local, I would say Stanislaus County.
Purchases in concession stands and stuff like that? Anything?
Whatever their reporting is, I mean, if they're... Okay. But I understand that, but I'd like to see what that breakdown is, not just an anecdotal, it's 95%.
As part of the agreement, one of the things is Joe and John and I are going to be sitting down monthly to go over the monthly statements for the previous month's revenue and expenditures, and we'll discuss that, and I'll get you some numbers.
Okay. Then, on the monthly basis, they're going to be providing financial reports. I, and that's great, I would like to see that. I would also like to see an annual audit done by a third party, if we could, so that we can check the revenue and expenses.
Is that being done now? You guys have a CPA, don't you? Okay, we'll talk about it. I'll get you an answer.
What, okay. I mean, what does that mean? Does that mean, yes, it will, or?
Well, I think we got to talk about it, because there's obviously an added expense there, and it's not in the agreement as it stands now, so.
Yeah, I think that's a reason.
Okay.
That adding financial work.
Okay. Well, I personally can't approve it unless I would have an audit. When we're using, when there's a use of taxpayers' dollars and other things, I think we have to have some sort of audit as a part of that, so.
Well, I just wanted to provide a regular basis, and also returning city on the monthly.
Well, I just want a third-party independent review of it.
Would the city willing to pay for that?
I, why would the city pay that?
Because I don't think, I don't think it's necessary, but that's what we were going to talk about. You're requiring it. It's going to be a good incentive to have the latter to offer.
I, I understand that, that's, that's, well, we'll see how the rest of the council feels. Okay, it talks about hiring of people, because in my understanding, in this agreement, the city will no longer maintain that facility. That facility will be maintained by CYB, correct?
Correct. Other than, excuse me, other than our building maintenance facility staff, because there's some responsibilities that we want over the refrigeration, the coolers, some of the lighting, but other than that, field maintenance, grounds maintenance, custodial services, CYB's assuming.
And is that going to be done with volunteer labor, or is that going to be done with contracted labor or combination?
No, it's, we actually, it's going to be a combination. We have two individuals that are working full-time, part-time there, they're there all the time, and we've done an extensive background check to make sure that they were clear. We've went out into the community and actually sent out applications and then sent out job announcements, so we think we have qualified individuals to maintain the fields. One of them that we hired is a retiree from the Parks Department in Modesto, so he's, he knows what he's doing. And the other one is a, has a background in construction and maintenance, so we hired two individuals to do that. We think we're competent enough, but that's one of the other reasons why Jeremy and I will be meeting on a regular basis, to make sure that they're always under some type of supervision, and then the supervision actually falls under my purview as the vice president of baseball.
Okay. And so as a result of that, prevailing wage has to be utilized, so.
Yes, sir.
Are you set up to be able to do prevailing wage?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All that, and all that language is in the terms of the agreement, and I've got the forms and everything to help Joe.
Okay.
Get the determinations.
Okay, so, you, I'm glad you said you already had, had someone hired, because that was going to be my, my next comment, that I think that there would need to be some, at least I would feel comfortable if there was some wording in there that said that employees that were hired or paid prevailing wage could not be of relation to any of the board members. I, okay, and that, that's perfect, but I would like to maybe have something added to the agreement to that effect. I just don't think it looks good if, you know, city, city equipment and other things are, you know, we're hiring and paying prevailing wage to a family member of a board member, that just doesn't look good, so. And then, as far as, obviously, the insurance requirements, we're making sure that with that, that they meet all of the insurance requirements? Okay. Okay, so the, so I guess the, the real issue that I have is, is, you know, I would like to have a third-party audit to the revenue and expenses, so that at least we can see how, how things are operating. And the only reason I ask that is because it's not like CYB is coming and completely renting all of the facilities and taking it on. At that point, I'd say, that's fine, you're paying us an amount, but we are involved, there's taxpayers, money that's involved, so we need to just make sure that there's an audit and a, and a regular trail for everything, so I hope you understand that.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Can we need a written definition of actually what kind of audit you need of what kind of special we need to go?
Sure, I, I think you guys have a pretty good feel for what I'm looking for.
CPA, you're talking about CPA.
CPA, regular, A and I.
I'm thinking a CPA, yeah.
Right. We'll talk about it.
Now, is that done, like, in the first month, each month that you meet?
No, because.
It'd be annual. It'd be annual.
So when it's over with, then we'd go ahead? The year's up, the contract's there, and then we go?
So I would assume, without thinking about it too far, is it would be something similar to, they would supply us a financial statement for 2015 in March of 2016.
So the, the years pass, so haven't we been doing stuff like that? Hasn't the, part of the MOU?
So we've been getting some financials, you know, CYB is under a whole new management, you know, regime, and a lot of these discussions Joe and John and I've had over the last couple of months are just similar to that. You know, the, the expenses and the revenues and, and where's all the expenditures? You know, one of the things that Joe and, we talked extensively about was the, when they held the piece of paper up at the study session here a while back, where it was $97,000 in gross and $91 in expenses. You know, we want to see that stuff, and that's what we've agreed to, is to get those types of things.
Right.
Yeah, we, we haven't been provided that in the past, so it was, we had to take that on faith, that that was correct.
We were getting limited information in the past, but that, this monthly reporting, we feel like will give a much better picture on a snapshot as we move forward on a month-to-month basis, and the, the audit would be best on an annual basis, you know, and that would be appropriate for the, the calendar year, be the most likely for, that would have benefit for them as well, as for us, it would be on that calendar basis.
What, what would an audit cost, just hypothetically speaking? Just?
I mean, our city audit is what, Suzanne? I want to say 5,000-ish?
On the button, the, the city audit's very expensive, but the component units run usually $2,500 to $5,000, so I'm thinking they should be able to get something for $3,000, maybe less, just depending on the CPA firm. There's some really reputable smaller firms that would probably do it for less than $3,000. It shouldn't be more than that.
For HOAs that were in that range from $1,500 to $2,000, you know, that would be a similar magnitude of expenses I would expect. Yeah, we can get those for you.
You know, I truly believe that John and Joe, you guys are going to do a tremendous job on this. I mean, I truly feel that. I know there's been a lot of communication going on with Jeremy, and, and, you know, I think it is going in the right direction right now. I do have a question, though, on number nine. And number nine says CYB shall not charge advertisers more than 30% above cost of the banners. Why was that put in there?
They'd have to ask the city.
So, I think it was more of just a, a consistency for CYSO. You know, we've got banners, we've got plaques, we've got signs, so we're trying to get a consistency going. So what Tracy's doing out at First, the River Bluff Park, is a little bit different. So we just wanted to get some consistency that we had general plate, and there was one more factor in there, too, is we did get some, some marketing information from the City of Turlock for Padretti on what they were charging, and those were some of the fees that we just added as part of that language.
Advertisers more than, I'm just trying to read this one, you know, because, again, being involved in sports and running elections and whatever have you, I would hate for somebody to tie my hand in regards to, if there's money that I can go out there and make, and 30% of a banner, I mean, we sold banners for the Series softball that cost us $60, local, and birdie plus, and sold them for 400. And so, you know, that, that right there, that's, that's more than 30%. I would kind of like to see that this not be in there. I don't think that, it's, they're running, they're the ones that are going to go out there, put the effort forward to be able to sell the banners. The banners have to be a specific height, four feet, six, eight, 10, or whatever the case is, in length, but I just think that, you know, here, we're obviously going to charge them, maybe for the audit, you know, it's, it's their thing. If they want to go out and sell 20 banners and have it be, then, then why are we the ones going to make decisions on that?
I don't have a problem.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just.
I have no problem with that. It's fine.
Yeah, that's fair.
I don't have a problem with that, personally.
All right.
Okay, that was the extent of my questions. If we could incorporate, you know, percentage of the lot, of the shop local, and just kind of see more of an itemized list on what that was, not just a, well, we had 95%, we don't know. I'd like to see what it was and what was purchased, just so that we can see, because we are trying to make sure that we do get a...
That would be, excuse me, but that would be on your monthly statement?
Whether you want to do it monthly or annually, it doesn't matter to me, but I would like to see that, that.
They would be on every month.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. And I want to be able to look at the chamber and say, yes, we had shop local at 80% of all the, of the products that ran through our facility were purchased with shop local, and right now, I, I just have anecdotal stories, I don't know what that was, so I'd like to be able to say, yes, there was candy bars, or there was, you know, whatever it was that was purchased, so. Because it creates jobs in, in our community, and I think that's important.
So just to clarify.
If we're moving forward, do you have a document on the table?
And local, local Stanislaus County.
I mean, unless my, my, I would say, group thinks different. I mean, I think local is Stanislaus County.
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, I would love to see it re, broken out for Series and Stanislaus County, but I, but for discussion purposes, I believe Stanislaus County is local, if, I mean, I don't want to see the Bay Area, but, but I understand that there is certain things that, you know.
Right now, the only thing that we really go outside the area for are for uniforms for the travel teams.
Okay.
That's, that's about it. Everything else is running within the county.
Okay. All right.
Also, it isn't Turlock or Modesto.
And, and just along those signs, I mean, is there not anybody that does uniforms locally that we could utilize?
Well, we, I brought that up. We actually did invite some members of the community that have uniform shops or embroidery stores and that sort of thing to our last meeting to put in a bid, and then one person showed up.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? And so you're okay with those, those changes?
Yeah, we'll sit down next few days and.
Okay.
We do a little bit. We'll bring it back next meeting.
Okay, then, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item, is this six?
Six.
Item number six with the, with the revisions that were discussed, that, that had the breakout of the, the shop local and the reporting of the percentage, also with an annual audit, and then the wording that said that any hired help by CYB cannot be, any of the, any of the hired cannot be relatives of board members or, or any affiliation with the, with CYB.
Mayor, if you're impressed with that.
Sure.
Because the, it would be board, board elections to go on an annual basis. What, what do we do if a, somebody is nominated for a board position that is related to an existing employee of CYB?
They raise their hand and say, I'm sorry, I can't take the position because I have a relative that's currently working. That's how it typically works.
Any issues with that? I mean, no legal issues?
It's an nepotism clause you want to put in there, right?
Right. That's correct.
Okay, we'll, we'll agree with that.
Okay.
Again, I, just doesn't look good if we're letting you use facilities and someone stands up and says they're hiring their relative to work out here.
Understood.
Mayor, just for clarification, I think it'd be easier for staff if we just recommend, if you continue this to the next item, that way we'd make sure we get a document that both CYB staff and council, we've heard what your comments are, it would be, I think, a little easier to make sure we have a clean document.
Okay.
Back to you, rather than having to guess. That way, we're all on the same page, and we have the opportunity to get them to have real costs for, you know, they're agreeing to an audit, but I would want them to make sure they're comfortable with that cost before we.
Okay.
Move in that direction.
That's fine.
It would be my request.
All right, so I, so my motion will be amended to continue this item to what, the next regular meeting, huh? Okay.
Second.
Before I do that, I want to open up to the public to see if there's any comment on this item. Okay, hearing done, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosset.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Passes 401. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item number, we have no finished businesses at this time, no public hearing, no new business, just one discussion item, Measure H Expenditure Plan Revision.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening is discussion items, this is really our first study session item included as part of our regular agenda, so change from years past of doing study sessions before, so this discussion item is a replacement for the study session. So primarily, the conversation this evening is looking for council direction as we go back to the Measure H Oversight Committee to review the expenditure plan. So, as we've discussed in the past, now it's locked up. There we go. So with the approval of the fiscal year budget in 2014-15, so back in June of, of 2014, council directed and recognized at that point in time that the Measure H Expenditure Plan had to be revised, and I'll explain kind of why we came to that conclusion. With the approval of this year's budget, again, that was confirmed by the end of this calendar year, so 12/31/2015, we would need to get that expenditure plan updated, so we're seeking direction from the council to kind of put some parameters for the Measure H Oversight Committee on what they should be focusing their efforts on in our meeting that's scheduled for them next week. So, here's the original plan. I know it's pretty small, but I'll just hit the highlights. Overall, the first 10 years of the plan, again, if we recall, Measure H, half-cent sales tax for public safety, there's no sunset clause on that, so it is, there's no timeframe on it, but we identified when the, the measure was adopted, the spending plan for the first 10 years. And so you can see there at the top, we assumed a base sales tax that would be generated by this measure of $2.7 million, and over the 10 years, we would hire 24 positions, it was 13 in PD and 12 in fire, I'm sorry, 13 and 11 between police and fire, and spend roughly $31 million. Well, that was the plan, and unfortunately, the economy didn't, didn't help with that plan. So here's the original expenditure plan. You can see, in blue is the revenue, and red is the expenditure. So you can see, as we started the original plan, as it was built, we would be building up a surplus. So in those first, really first five years, we would be bringing in more money than we were spending, so that we would have, in essence, money in the bank to make the final hires that were identified in the expenditure plan. So year seven, which was last year, was the year that we were going to hire, in essence, about 12 people from that original plan. Well, the economy didn't cooperate, and so this is that same information, so the blue and the red are the same, so again, projected revenue and projected expenditures. Now we've added in the green and the purple to show you what's, what really happened. So you can see comparison between the blue and the green would be the difference in revenue. So, as I mentioned, the first year, we expected $2.7 million, we got $2.1, and in year two, we were expecting that 2.7 to grow by 3%, and it actually declined to 1.8 million, reflective of the economy. The other thing you can compare, then, is the, the purple to the red, so the actual expenditures would be those two numbers. You can see, they're relatively pretty consistent of what we expected to spend versus what we actually spent, spent in the program through the first seven years. And of course, the last two years, 16, 17, 17... And of course, the last two years, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, those are projections, um, based on what we have today. And that's really what we're talking about is how do we make those changes going forward? So any questions on that? And there's a lot of information on a, on a slide there. But paints the picture, basically a visual for what some folks may argue that this was an expenditure problem. We spent the Measure H funds on, you know, we spent too much of them. Really from my perspective, if you look at it where we should have been, we're about five million dollars short of where we expected to be at this point in time. And that's really a reflection of the economy. And when we did the projection, where we were at the very peak of the market and we projected that was going to increase to three percent. We had no way of knowing that the market was going to drop, um, by about twelve percent on that sales tax generation. So put us into, um, some would have changed, um, so the expenditure plan had to be changed. It actually has been amended three times, so those first, um, the first year it was amended, um, dialed back a little bit. Um, and then it was amended two more times and that's where we're at now, looking at a formal amendment, uh, for the expenditure plan. So here's the current plan and in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, the year that we're current, um, currently in, um, the original plan or the amended plan as it stands today. Uh, was going to be hiring three, three additional firefighters and you could see next year, an additional police officer. The following year, additional police officer and three firefighters. Challenge with that plan as we stand today, as the budget was approved for fifteen, sixteen. The, uh, Measure H fund balance was just a little bit under five-hundred thousand dollars. And the expenditures planned for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen will spend all of that balance. So with next fiscal year, we will be, the, the fund balance for Measure H will be completely expended. And we will need to reduce the expenditures of Measure H, um, by a couple hundred thousand dollars to be balanced between revenues and expenditures. The, the bottom line is there, we have to look to the future for the next hires of the expenditure plan for Measure H. And so that's really what the questions are this evening of those parameters for setting the expenditure plan for the future. So the first, first piece, where original was a ten-year plan of what to, um, you know, kind of lay out the, the picture for, for the expenditure plan. So looking for council direction as to what, what that parameter would be, how far out do you want to look? Uh, from a staff perspective, ten years is, uh, a lot can happen in ten years. We think a five-year is probably a better range and maybe that three to five years. We should still be looking at it annually every time we come to the budget. This, this is something we have to look at. But from a, a bigger picture planning document, we think five years is probably as far as we should go based on what our current economic situation is. Still a little cloudy as I've been saying, um, so looking for your direction. If you want to go through each one of these little three and then come back to it or your preference on how you'd like to do that.
I think we can go through each one of these, have a little discussion and give you the direction. Um, I, I would agree with you. I think ten years is too long. I would probably say the three to five-year range with annual review would be what I might suggest.
And that's what, we'll go to Measure H Oversight, get their opinion and they'll come back with direction. I just want to be, again, put some parameters of what the council's comfort level. Last thing I want to do is go get the Measure H Oversight Committee of all the things they want to do and the council comes back, whoa, whoa, we only wanted you to look at this part, so...
Yeah, I, I, I think ten years is too, too far and, and, uh, I think if we narrow that window down a little bit and kind of get, you know, better handle on where we are. I mean, unless someone else wants a different timeframe.
I agree.
I'm good with it.
Alright. So the second item, uh, as I mentioned, the original expenditure plan had a base, uh, sales tax revenue of about two-point-seven million dollars. It was assumed an annual increase of three percent year over year. We've, uh, we've seen a complete, you know, very different, um, animal. As I mentioned, it dropped off in year two. Um, if you look at it on an average basis, it's three-point-two-five. But that average includes a fifteen percent increase, a twelve percent decrease, an eight percent increase and then a one and a two. Um, so the, the number's kind of all over the place. So what we would, from a staff perspective, three percent's probably on the ups, the upper end, especially for the next couple of years. As we discussed with the Oversight Committee, you know, it might be more like one percent for the next year or two and then increase. But looking for some council direction of what your comfort level is there for that assumed, uh, increase.
Well, I think by, by going down to three to five years, it helps us be able to hone that in. So, I mean, I, if, if, if your recommendation is three percent, I think that that's fine, uh, you know, and...
Three percent's probably on the upper end. I, like I said, I would think probably for years, the next year or two, it'll probably be more like one percent based on what we're seeing currently. Our sales tax, what we've seen in the first quarter of this fiscal year, you know, dropped about, uh, just under one-point-seven, just under one percent, so...
So your recommendation would be one percent?
One percent. I would say, I would, if I were to say it right now, I'd say one percent for, for two or three years. And if we're looking at a fiery window, then maybe two percent for those other years, but, you know, that's...
Well, i- again, this is just an estimate, so, uh, I, I'd rather be on the safe side than the sorry side, so...
Lower end.
I could support one percent.
I agree.
I see heads nodding.
I agree.
Alright. And then the last piece is the balance between the two, two departments. Again, we met, passed Measure H, um, it was one public safety department. So the, this conversation about the split between the two was, was there, it was a conversation, but it wasn't, um, something that was primarily mentioned in anywhere in the ordinance. But again, from the original expenditure plan, if you look at those strict numbers for the first ten years, it was fifty-one percent. Um, police forty-nine percent, fire, um, through the first seven years, so that's through this last count, fiscal year, and we're at fifty-seven, forty-three. You know, from a staff perspective, trying to meet the intent of the ordinance, I would think we need to be at balance at some point in time. But if the council wants to be balanced next year, you know, that means a whole different thing than trying to make up for, you know, seven years of a difference. So kind of looking at that range of where you, first question is, you agree with the intent of the ordinance of being at balance between the two departments? Second question is how long of a range to get to that point?
Is that counting the safer grant guys?
That's, that's all expenses put into those two buckets.
So it's everything?
It's everything, yeah.
So are we going to have hirings for the safer grant? Will that increase the numbers of the fire there?
No, that won't, because safer grant will not be through Measure H, so that will be a separate. This is just, this is just Measure H expenditures.
It's not the entire?
Nope, yeah, this is just the Measure H expenditures, those actual expenditures that have run through the Measure H account that have been separated. And approved by the Measure H Overcom, Oversight Committee every single year. So, I mean, these are the actual numbers as they were approved, um, not just the budget numbers, the actual final numbers. That's what the, the fifty-seven, forty-three is based on.
Well, I, I, I would agree with you that I think w- we need to come to the middle with both of them as, now. I don't think that that needs to happen overnight. I think we need to start the transition. Part of those reason the percentages are where they are is because of our revenues and probably how hiring was staged. And now we're at the back half when, um, you know, fire is probably to be hired. And we don't have the funds to be able to do that per se based upon our projections. So I would say that, you know, so what you're saying here is, you know, seven years to kind of get it?
That would be...
I, I, I think that's probably the realistic. And then obviously, if we're looking at this in every three to five years, then we can always readjust that if revenues increase and get... But I would say, yes, the goal for me would be, you know, neutrality between the two. But I, I, I don't want to cause havoc by trying to get there overnight.
Yeah, the reality is, you know, fire was set up for higher, you know, three at a time was, was the, you know, you're, you're filling that each time. So that shifted things a little bit because you need to have some money in the, in the bank per se to be able to make those three hires. I think as we move forward, you know, we'll probably look at that a little differently. Um, you know, do you really need to do three at, you know, all at one time? Are there other ways to, to phase that in with, you know, the things that we've got currently going on? So those are things that we would look at. But, you know, from a staff perspective, we would recommend, you know, probably a, a five to seven-year range to smooth that out. Um, and it may be five years, but, you know, to smooth that back out and get it in line. And there, there's going to be ebbs and flows over time, you know, you're never going to have it, you know, spot on. But a- again, just making sure that we're on the same page, same path and page as we go to talk to Measure H Oversight Committee of where council sits. Because ultimately it is the council's purview. Um, Measure H Oversight Committee really has one primary function and their primary function is reviewing the expenditure plan to ensure that it's consistent with the original measure. Um, so, you know, we're, we're reminding them of that purpose. And the council actually makes the decision on the expenditure plan, but, you know, making sure that they, they're seeing that beforehand. So it gives them the opportunity to kind of see where the direction is, so everybody's, again, on the same page.
Well, I, I, and first of all, I, I, this is a great problem to have, you know, having the Measure H, um, situation. But I, I basically see that this is a pretty simple formula where the expenditure plan has to match the revenue plan. And right now, the revenue plan is over-projected while the expenditure plan has continued to go with that over-projection. I see it as just a right sizing and a, you know, a reevaluation of the expenditure plan to come in line with the revenue plan. I mean, we can't go into a situation where our expenditures continue to go up and the revenue isn't supporting it. That's, that, then that's a, that's a bigger problem.
Counsel thoughts on that particular?
Did I give you the direction you needed on this?
On, so far, yeah, and then if there's really anything else. Um, our, our overall plan is to go to Measure H Committee next, um, get their direction, come back to council for approval of that revised expenditure plan. Um, as I mentioned, changes for, you know, reducing the expenditure plan to get back in balance for next fiscal year. We would do that as part of next year's budget, so we don't anticipate reducing the Measure H expenditure plan at this current time. We would do that, um, as part of next year's budget approval process. So this is really just setting the, the bigger picture, long-range plan, and we'd come back next year as part of the budget. Um, you know, there may be an opportunity at the mid-year budget depending on kind of where things are looking in terms of revenue. As I mentioned, we're down a little bit on revenue. We may need to tweak that a little bit, but, um, that's kind of the overall plan. So unless there's any other, uh, items that the council feels need to be addressed, uh, by the Oversight Committee, um, that's really all the direction that we're looking for.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
What's that?
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that had any comment on this? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you, Toby. This time, is there any council member referrals? Nope. Reports, uh, I have nothing to report. Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing, Mayor.
Vice Mayor De Rosset?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lane?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, we'll start with staff. Ms. Dean? Mr. Hallahan?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Got a couple of things, Mayor. Uh, the first one, as most of you know, um, after the council meetings, um, on Tuesday mornings. We, we attempt to show the video of this, uh, meeting on, um, charter, uh, through the, um, through our arrangement with CSU Stanislaus. We've had some challenges with that over the past couple of weeks, which has pushed us into, um, kind of finding another alternative. So what we've done, um, with this last meeting is we actually were able to, uh, through our website provider, put a link to a YouTube host which has the video of last, our last meeting. So there's now links on our webpage where you can look at and watch the video from this council meeting. Um, our goal will be kind of moving forward. We're not, at this point, going to be moving backwards and re, you know, updating, uh, past videos. But going forward, we'll be putting the videos from this meeting, um, on our website. And there's a couple of different places. You can get it right off the front homepage of our website. There's a link underneath the, the green boxes where you get to the council agendas. Click right there as a video archive. Um, and so our goal will be to put that up by noon on the day following the city council meeting, um, as we kind of work through those logistics. So it's a good option for folks who missed the meeting to be able to see, see the video. Um, and so that's, we were, we were happy to get that going. It was a, a low-cost alternative, um, to be able to get that using some free software through, through YouTube. Um, also wanted to mention the SRWA, the Surface Water, the Regional Surface Water Plan. And there's been quite a bit of press on that recently and I know the mayor's intimately familiar with this. But just wanted to reiterate from a serious perspective that, and especially from a staff, we are committed to the project and looking forward to moving the project forward. Uh, City of Modesto will probably be taking some action tomorrow night to, in essence, get out of the way. Uh, so that the surface water project can move forward and, uh, both serious and Turlock staff have been meeting regularly to find, um, new partners and to move forward as quickly as we possibly can. But, um, you know, there's been some comments about the project maybe potentially not going, you know, going away. And I wanted to, to reiterate that, uh, we are committed to it and getting another source of water for the city is, is critically important. Uh, also had a meeting this afternoon, just as heads up to the council about, uh, county-wide half-cent sales tax, um, for transportation purposes. So the, uh, StanCOG Board has done, uh, I know Councilmember Rhino was at the Policy Board Meeting last week with the presentation on the polling data. And that is showing favorable response. And so it appears that the Policy Board will be moving forward, um, creating the expenditure plan. And so after the first of the year, we'll be coming back to the council for council support of that, um, potentially on a November twenty-sixteen ballot. Uh, a reminder that we do have a joint school board meeting this Thursday evening. Uh, they'll be here in the council chambers and that has been, um, the agenda is out. You have a copy here on the dais. A relatively straightforward agenda for this, this week. And I, I wanted to thank the chamber for their efforts, um, on, on Measure E. That is a big, big win for our, our community. And I also wanted to remind everyone that the, um, City Hall will be closed on Wednesday for Veterans Day.
Okay. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Um, Tracy Ferris, Steve Hallam and I, um, uh, attended the Chamber Board Retreat last Friday. Um, some good energy coming out of that, uh, for sure. And I think there's some exciting things that the chamber's planning to do this upcoming year. So, um, just wanted to, to thank Renee for kind of putting that on and all the hard work that she does. The other thing, just wanted to mention that on, uh, November thirtieth, uh, we are going to have kind of that first, um, Joint Planning Commission City Council Study Session to kick off the general plan update. Um, we're currently setting up stakeholder interviews, um, uh, for folks within the community. And then, uh, the beginning of January or the end of January, we'll have our first kind of public workshop to kind of kick off that effort. So just wanted to remind you, we'll get, we'll put that on your calendar, but we'll be, November thirtieth will be the kickoff meeting.
Okay. Mr. Jordan? Mr. Smith? Okay. Mr. Nichols? Ms. Ferris? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Jeremy?
Nothing.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on Monday, November twenty-third at six P.M. Thank you. Sorry, we have closed session item. So I can't adjourn this? I can't? Okay, well, well, I'll adjourn to our closed session meeting. Thank you.